This is now the 7th day of January 2, 2021. And I want to introduce you to the board of education. I'm the chairman of the city school board. This is typical meeting of the city school board of education. And so we need to impolite the government. This is not a problem. Public is required to last proceedings under order of an opportunity for public participation. We will inform the second review of the letter. There are a ton of wonderful award amounts behind the policies and the duty board and administration. We have a lot of wonderful comments. Here, please welcome.
Mr. Trump. Mrs. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Buss.
Here.
Ms. Malm.
Here.
Mrs. Trump.
Here.
The judge of the court of justice. The law of the United States of America. Initiative of law and privilege of chance. A one nation, a unified, universal, the diversity and access to law.
Second. Mrs. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mrs. Trump.
Yes.
Mr. Buss.
Yeah.
Ms. Malm. Yes. Mr. Trump.
We have a communication tonight. Um, Paul, what do you want to say before we go about talking about the question?
Um, I called Gierin today to ask them about their policy with any, what their policy is. Kids' masks in the buses. Gierin said that they will follow a federal mandate from the CDC. All kids will have to wear but, wear masks on their buses unless sometime during new school year. The, that mandate is dropped by the federal government and the CDC. And at that time, then they would allow school districts to make their decision on whether they want to keep masks on the buses or not have masks on the buses. And that is from Gierin today.
All right, looking forward. Do you have anyone who wants to speak? Looking forward. Um, what else did you say? I think there was a dodge from the side.
Just have a quick question. I used to be in an address in the district. One of my friends, he had a very, um, very, um, right. Um, I remember this little, in May, um, we get a bad news. And there were issues that happened somewhere, but I have a refund.
Hi. I'm sorry, I was too busy about the math books that were not used. That were not. Math problems that were not used?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so there was communication in spring about that happening. And you should be receiving the refund. Um, shouldn't have got that, but I'm glad I have.
Yeah.
We'll check in on it. Okay. So you can all read your name and email.
Was it a symbol that they heard that they had a problem with their name? They rather use, like somebody thought that for their, their parents. Or a symbol that they didn't use in their rings or anything? Um, because they, I don't know if they were, so I don't know if they were speaking to me.
That's okay. I have one more question. Um, can you say, are there some people that are being asked if they're wearing masks?
The leading school that are being asked are not wearing masks. Um, and this is my fault. Taking my attention from me or the whole apartment about getting out two weeks ago. They should have been being asked on the wall. And I made a decision on the outside part of implement that from the level of role. Because there's something kids, in some way, so the answer is yes, they should be.
Okay.
Anything else I could say?
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's on the topic. Not that much.
You're here in general.
First time.
That's why, just like before, just on the side.
Uh, hi, I'm in the general business and our teacher, her name is so, her name is so big as mine. And that sign was very nice on my school the first time. So, um, I'm trying to get them to come up with my first line. And everyone gave her advice at my school. I'm very special, I'm sorry. Um, and the first thing I guess we should give is to stay away from the habits. Because it smells like smoke, or lady in there, or just meat in there. And Emily, who is, as far as committed to taking on that job, and would even reserve funds to have a gas to go back. And we pulled it all good. But I was saying that that was unacceptable. Like really unfair or hostile to the person. So I just wanted to work that in my own ways. Number two, um, she tried to contribute to the chair and she made the president. I think there was a little bit of miscommunication from the cheerleading setup in her words to the inaction. There were times, I think in her words, to go forward. Um, so I also had to work that as a misconception. Um, it's really disheartening, I think, for the students. And she probably thought this is really talking about her right now. Because she knows that this is going to get back to the coaches that it will affect her. And that she doesn't want that to happen. I frankly don't want that to happen either, but I feel like if it would have certainly been, it's going to just continue on as this. So Emily, um, and a lot of her friends were told that the freshmen they did this year try out for the JV team or in the basketball. And they walled it down front of the basketball. One freshman put it down for football. And none of the freshmen in the JV. Okay, I think we have. But they claimed that it is an outside disorder. Well, according to Emily, she scored higher than actually the most of the varsity cheerleaders. She scored higher than the entire JV team. And she did not do. And we were asked why she, they said the first one was not exceptional. They were really, as a freshman, she needed to get a, to not do. Or, I'm sorry, or want to do. And she got one to do. So again, she scored higher than the entire team. And most of the varsity teams as well. So it's not a big deal, she's very happy to be on the freshman. But the way that it was presented, it just seems kind of cocky. And they wanted outside people to score them. And they claim that they don't take the team themselves, the coaches do, that it's all based off their score. But that clarity was not case for that, so. Too much about that, so. Again, sure, yeah, I see, it's not like it affects your status, you talk about next year or, you know, but I saw a little bit of this on. Someone that was really guarded or skilled, great at it. Um, and we also learned from Dan White, our teacher, because I must have called him. And he said that he wanted to keep the upper class over here. Now, I don't want to maintain on the faculty and basketball team. If she tried with the little team, she could make a lot of results, a freshman girl. She could make a lot of basketball, a freshman girl. She could make a lot of softball, a freshman girl. But she cannot make a lot of beach here, as a freshman girl. I don't think the best player can be sky, she can limit for all her exits. And we're not being, uh, be here, it's not. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you for speaking. And all the sort of frustration that you're having, and all our business, very nice to feel comfortable. And well taken care of, um, you're welcome. I can go to the door? Okay, see you tomorrow. I still feel comfortable to see you. You can be, be, uh, with me, and you can sort of, uh, and enjoy the tour, so you can sit and speak, you know, backstage. And welcome to the, uh.
Jill. I'm not sure. Hi, I'm just seeing my baby. And I've got a sound recording to give you. It's definitely a sound recording. And I'm just going to put it behind the federal, like, credit. Um, so it's supposed to end this number thirteen. At that time, the district reopened on the power of the passing of this, this was what it was coming down to, this is so much may.
I, I remember that the federal has mandated for transportation in the, in the, did they get that information together?
No, that's out there.
That, I think, you can send it to my, 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 look at, exactly, that all the, just what's Wednesday. That is not what they told us. And it also said that it would be, the different form of development. It said at this point, that there is no, uh, there are no different for the transportation mandate. It was, you're playing, which means you need to pass it.
That's what the federal is saying, so it's a fantastic point.
Can you, can you tell me a little?
Yes, okay, okay. Second, could you please, like, give me some, like, the given stuff that you kind of, so. I don't know, but with what they're, is that, there are five, right? This is not a proper public transportation. I can't run the bus myself, I'm a kid, so. So I'm confused.
All right, they are, they are private. They follow, they said that they follow the CDC federal mandate. And that everybody on their bus is required to wear it. Including the bus drivers or agents. Even if they've been vaccinated.
Even if they've been vaccinated. And even though, like, my son was quarantined for ten days because someone.
So was I.
Roadbuster, next block, fast. Where do you say the mask? Keep them all safe. There would, it's out in the still, you're in the face, you're in a quarantine, so there are eight months, I mean, it's up on this.
Yeah, but when you, yeah, the way that COVID is still designated, um, we also require it in order. Um, if it's small, we're also still required, required to report. You know, they reduce the, the space, uh, particularly the rear seat. And it's a little, yeah, it's sort of, uh.
Okay. Um, additionally, for those who, now, students will be sitting in your rush, or sleeping in a gym, or they'll be sitting in a market.
Um, we're going to keep it out of, all the kids, even, you know, back. But again, uh, we are trying to do things, both somehow on the bottom.
Okay. And lockers?
Sorry, what's it?
Lockers, okay, they use.
Lockers, yes.
Okay. Thank you, I understand this.
Yeah, I understand, please. Over to you, Karen.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so let me just, or, I think we use a private company to provide our transportation for students. I mean, so, it's public.
Yeah, yeah, so, again, you know, like, somebody else here today, the question was, is, it's not public because the general public can't write. That's not what makes public, public. And it's that, it doesn't matter what it's public. Even private students that provide transportation for students are required to follow the mask mandate on transportation. Um, in our case, our multiple lists are publicly funded and our private services, funny, about, doesn't matter. Say one of those kids comes to town to wear a mask on the bus, walk. Anybody who's riding a bus, any student who's riding a bus in school, will have to ride it for about a hundred minutes. Until it's taken by their standard, she thought that it had a level lower back, but, um. Again, all the information I'm getting from the department, which is basically in the local departments, that is still, um, still active. And really, and definitely, um, you can cover the barriers, cover the, I mean, any sort of, I'm not sure about the word, it's a fair.
I just wanted to hear, because, you know, you know, we have a public transportation, because buses and trains, so.
Thank you. Um, we talked about this briefly upstairs, so if you guys don't agree on that, so go through it, go through it. Uh, so if we have a mandate from, from the federal government, from the county, whatever it be, we're going to follow it. Um, board of directors. Well, the mandate expires as a board, we won't discuss it. But it seems to be, like, the five of us that's sitting here right now, we're very much waiting for this, trying to keep, sort of, get some of it as back as possible as possible. So if a mandate does expire, although we won't discuss it, it sure seems like, well, we're just trying to go without masks. Trying to get back in the cafeteria, use the locker, to save everyone back to the normal life as much as we possibly can. So, um, obviously, like now, there's five of us here comparing, like, I don't know, with the face or something. It sure seems like, well, how long before is that, after all? You guys agree?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Joe? Joe, can I say something real quick? I, I just looked this up, because she brought this up. And it is under the TSA guidelines. It's, uh, TSA from the, uh, Transportation Security Administration. It says that it has been, as of right now, it will, uh, they will reevaluate. And in those groups of, for, for rails, airplanes, buses, um, what else did I say? Over, over the road buses. So all that type of stuff. That's it, I, I, I just looked it up. Yeah.
Uh, my name is Jim Bolver, but, you know, like, I have five. So I have a lot of, so. Um, I just wanted to know, what happens if we don't follow the mandate? You know?
I can tell you, I honestly don't know.
So is it a law, or a mandate? Is there a difference?
Yeah, it is, it is, it is, uh, it's a mandate provided by the CDC, which is now a vote of our identity.
Makes a lot of sense.
I, I can't see any of that question, if I may. When a mandate sounds like it's a suggestion. But there is such a thing called per stray control. Where all of a sudden, the state would say, fine, you're hot, you're old, you cut your, and that is.
They're fine. Span the rest.
That's tough. That's how the government gets people to comply with suggestions. They will, at federal level. They've done it on the federal level, they do it state level, county level. If you want to assert independence, and I, trust me, I'm all to keep defenses. But I'm also, if you think it's, the operating costs are bad enough now, we get nothing from the state. We're going to go through a budget quicker than we're human. But that's how they, that's how they get you to comply.
So, do you know specifically how much money you're, that you're getting involved in?
I, I, I don't know, man. To me, if you're getting, or if it's in here, I'm going to go on the law. I'm going to go on the law. I don't know, first, why, why is it, I'm going to go on the law. Sure. I mean, I, that's, you know. Well, I don't, but I don't, you know. It's the law, it's what it is until it came to the law. Sure. So, um, but I think, as you both said, I think there is, there's probably a difference between the law and that. I mean, like, the law is passed by the legislature, but I think. There's, 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 there's a law, there's, there's. But, so, do you think you'd be punished, criminalized, or, you know, like?
I, I can tell you personally, and then I touch it when I'm wrong. I don't think I would be punished, criminal. I think I would be wrong for denying some people my physical license. So I, I think it's something I, so I can tell you, I do not want to go against it. Do I, whatever gets my taxes, you know, I do really, really want, I really want that. I want to protest, that's just, that's beautiful.
I appreciate that. And I, I think, you know, Dr. Carter, I've said this many times, you have to go with the law. There's a lot of people that are like, you can't go all, like, you can, just be good at learning, I'm not, but, but. I would strongly encourage you all, personal or over, like, you guys are Dr. Carter's office. So you can stop handling it, it's not the other way around. But I would strongly encourage you guys to eliminate any type of mask mandate in our schools.
Um, I just have a TSA report, I know. And this is where it's confusing, because it says here, the TSA has, um, TSA, TSA requires tougher, where your base is, per federal law. And that's where about the subtle law, maybe, because it's all, it's crazy.
I can, Joe, go back and, wait, uh, this one here. I feel a little free to see the police officer. So it's a lot, it's a little bit more than everyone else, but they're not going to arrest you because you're not law. Congressman, passer, president, or governor, and sign it. But doesn't count, uh, what I would say, it could restrict funding. So there's so many lessons you can talk this one day, because you did. Maybe it's time we start funding ourselves, instead of being dependent on state and the federal funding. I have another question, because I asked this at the principal's school last year, when I talked to him. Because I had a sheriff call on me for not wearing a mask in the park on the middle of the football game. I was asking, believe, a second was police officer there, asking, maybe my mother, who wears my mask, in the parking lot. Me, kind of, I was at the park, I was at a fall ball game on that, the coaches, the players, the parents, especially, weren't wearing masks. So, you know, this is more political, and that's just a reality. We want to talk about, talk about, whatever, we want to talk about. There's a reality, this is political, this isn't about. We need to start funding ourselves through our local tax dollars. I've lived in this community for seventeen years, and I move up twenty minutes north of here, watch this place, you know, from the small farms and woods. The bus and the shopping centers, strong developers of well-kept homes, industrial parks, and just, countless, everywhere you're putting the houses, there's a king. There's no reason why, because they still live there since nineteen, what's the dividend of our, of our youngest village? How old?
Ninety-seven.
Okay, so you have fifty-seven little villages, the youngs and middle schools. Yeah, and it's, and that is why I just go there and, okay. So why don't we start talking about funding ourselves privately, help the state shut up? Because like you said, you said before, what's going to happen if you don't, if you fight all these mandates? They're losing accountability. Well, why is it looking like a license to sell on the board, tell them to go for it? What are they going to do? I mean, like you said, there's no, you had to, they had to not wear any masks for summer school, what happened?
Well, nothing happened, nothing happened.
Yeah.
Question.
Well, did it keep them, refuse the bus kids? And they kick them off the bus, and they kick them out of there, so it was a detention for summer school? Are they even going to tamper that?
No, I just know there's a.
How, how, how does it work around? If you guys are bored, they're going to compare us. Strongly, you call up you and say, you drive the buses, you drive the occasion, wanting to be safely. Don't try not to wear, ever wear the mask. I can understand that they're throwing these on, and they're fearing safety, not wearing masks, not for the drivers, driving for wanting to be. So I felt like, you know, and also saying, uh, thank you for the time, please, give her these mask mandates. Oh, that's what I'm saying. Once exemptions are gonna happen, come this fall. Black shit, and I, I, except it's not a, there are exemptions that, to look it up, extraordinary orders now, but, but the exemptions, why don't this work? It is on there. I hope it's not, you don't ask, don't tell for them, on, 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 like, with this, like, you have to go to the shopping, or wear a necklace, how do you check? I'm going to need exemptions. Don't ask anyone, this is why I said the laws. Let them move on their business. If they want to wear a mask, let the people wear a mask. If they don't want to wear a mask, don't let them wear a mask. If you're scared to go to school, if you see kids not wearing masks, or are certain online masks, I'm assuming it's built up there. Or you have a kid who's looking at it, let them do online masks. Don't tamper with everyone for the fear of the thief. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Jake Bolver, and, um, I'm not, I actually have a quick question. Um, is there anything that you guys are planning on pointing to, about, that you can, because it's progress we got since I have been in high school? I actually want to know if you guys.
Well, your, 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 your.
Yeah, I would, I would, okay, we actually have this for a lot of technology to, because I think you see, like, big, you know, big factors? That will go off, but it's not a perfect science yet. But you're right, we can try, um, not necessarily, but worth having your life. Yeah, 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 you're right, yeah. But you're right, and it is, it is not.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Anything else?
It's a race.
Hi, okay, so I'm, 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 I'm Stacy Colber, I'm so sorry. And, yeah, we're a lot of us looking for, um, so we talked about masks. Um, and like, our kids, now, I can now just spend, like, eight weeks in normal, like, anything for the world, like, I have a lot of guys, machine. The damages compared to these things who were equipped in these masks, muscles, whatever, you know, that have been affected, fully discussed, these are the problem. The faces, all this here, it's funny, they got to have eight weeks of being normal, feeling normal, and seeing people smiling. The thought of us putting their dad in this situation, it is horrifying to us, apparently. Um, I, there are so many stories, it's, I mean, of course, are afraid to, like, come like, wow, oh, I guess someone's afraid to do that. Um, but the, the kids were suffering emotional trauma from this. It's literally, I can guarantee to our supermodel parents, I mean, my husband, who have got a fear of virus, that they haven't had it ever before. And we are very good at teaching our children that they fear God, fear that alone, and for someone out there, fearing virus. That is less than years for them, and shot while with flu. Because we didn't, we never feared before, that's, you know, that's just for the kids and children. Um, but literally, there's children who are afraid to take their mask off because they've been in them for so long. And the emotional, emotional damage that it's done, is, is, it's going to take years to try to fix this somehow. So, yes, the masking is huge. The class you got, I think the school that are in it, looks like the painful, the whole, yeah, last year. And I'm just thinking that, please, like, help us, and like, you know, we asked about the exemptions last year. Like, where we were in the minutes of the schools, they went five days earlier. The kid at the school, because obviously, we want our kids back, growing up, we can't understand how that always, when we got here, growing up. Um, they, they, they really do, can add, like, everything, and so I'm just going, you know, yeah, we're seeking their help, like, getting these things out of the faces. But these are long periods of time, which I know, you know, I saw, you guys, again, last year, um, this can issue, like, to, 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 suffered. I'm afraid about, you know, long damage, and I know you're saying, you know, now, that you're not anticipating having masks at school. But last year, the old restrictions, it could, he said, um, religious and mental exceptions, that were, yeah, the owners, man, he did it. All you had to do was say, yes, you're buying that, like, in a Christian, like, a dying Christian. Like, all these different schools who got city funding, honor. And it was, they were free to, you know, free to live like that, and again, the numbers are different. So please, look at the actual data, and amongst our school districts around us, realize we're just all participating in a stupid game. In this stupid charade, and all these different, um, measures that are just causing more problems, didn't make a difference. And do what might be the hard thing, do the right thing, keep saying for our kids. Just please, we're better, we have our children so many hours a week, we can't subject them to your, like, this again. So, like I said, you're saying, yes, we're, we did a lot harder than we needed to do last year. So if it doesn't give us much happiness, that you're going to do the least amount that has to be done, hopefully, nothing. Um, what we did do, you know, we can look back and see last year. And so, like I said, just like, really asking that, you give us, us parents, if we're making decisions for, according to other opinions. Because like I said, I'm not, we're not millions that pull our kids out, put them in practice schools, because we need to normally see for them. There's a lot more, and a lot of parents are talking about it, and especially today, with all this, right, and stuff going on. Everyone's looking again, how much money do we want to lose as a school district? From parents who can't take their third year in our own school for their kids. Our kids are huge guys, for such a short period of time. And all four of my, or two, eight, um, grades, or four, ten grade, I can't see another year, there's, there are lots being offered like this. Like, we're like, just, you know, we need to do the right thing for them. There's no reason, the vaccine is there, and you can consider, if you get it, all of this should be, be, at this, at this point. Please, do the right thing.
Did anybody come to you, is there exemption from the mask?
I think they would want the principal's.
For the principal, because, no, not in the high school. That's my question simply is.
Yeah, maybe.
Right, so exemptions can really apply to these.
None of them are true.
Oh, wow, honestly, I think very much is consistent, I mean, because schools like I can talk to, I did. And which is why I'm here, because of the new, and it's last year, but that day, because our school was open. For the entire year, and then I closed for two weeks, I felt like I just got the vaccine, because now I'm not so sick anymore, so I'm like, no, I'm not so. We never opposed the COVID, we opposed the vaccine. But, so, and when they went, not a stop, wearing these masks, that's why I'm on search, and people are like, oh, yeah, there's obvious school that, that are allowing injections minimum of the wrong. I took my weird day of work into my diet machine, and that, I mean, these classes, twelve, twenty five kids, unmasked, and everything's on empty. And I just wanted to stop, I was like, I was like, I can't do this, like, multiple year, like, I'm great at interaction, schools like that, and we can, we're now, we're managing, they're not like academically at all, I'm very cool for that. But I was like, they've actually been like emotionally, physically healthy too, not having the stupid issues that those were causing last year. That exists, it was amazing. And like I said, so when I started, you know, trying to get those exemptions, and everybody just wants to do what everybody else has done, and we're afraid. Um, and I keep saying, well, there's, well, there's often in schools, there's a problem, and nothing happens to them, because they're not us, that's just the reality.
My name's Stacey Kober, what am I speaking about? But we'll give this a try, it's again, for masks, I just want to get ready to, if you're not going to change the rules, like, um, five months into school, and say, hey, we're, we're not going to need that option anymore, and you got it. Is it, are the rules going to change, or are you going to, you know, get something on, and people are going to change, and they're always going to be optional? It is up to each individual year, it's best for their child, as regards to the, the advice that they, that they can run on basis.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm seeking the board, and I was saying, if it's impossible to say anything, I'm not going to. I'm not going to tell you, or, actually, what my intuition is, is that it's impossible. But I was simply, I don't think, I don't, very, very, very. Um, I, I see this is, but I just don't believe, say. Um, but it is, and I'm hoping that it doesn't cause an activity of ours. But I, my, my belief is, we, 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 we're not the state with that. But I, I, it would be disaggressive for me to sit here and say, with the one hundred percent certainty that I'm going to change my mind, I just don't think that.
Now, I notice, just because we don't know, last year, there's exemptions, and there are exemptions, if we were to change the rules in school, or the law next year, can we use those if you have exemptions, and when you got.
We, we, we are not, and I know that people definitely not, and people ask for, they, they, yes. We're, we're.
Is they get some kind of, with their bare mask on, and they start getting this different thing, and we have to take it to the doctor, who's thankful about it. So, who's helping that, but I think, I mean, they're all, it's expensive, because they're not going to face it, they're a boss. But it's not, it's, it's, it's.
Just so you, just so you understand, there is a civil penalty if, if you get caught about wearing a mask by, by the federal government, and you can be trying to make. I, I'm just reading what this, you're saying it's not a law, I know everybody says it's not a law. You know, I know each policeman, I'm a policeman, I've had a great, taken citations, okay? So I do know that it does happen. And it states right here, it is, there is a civil penalty that is part of this line structure, and you can be, had a start, it's two hundred and fifty dollars, and raise up to fifteen dollar. Now, whether somebody does anything to the dollar or not, I'm not Peterman, so I can't tell you what Peterman would do, but I'm just stating, there is the fact that it could be, it could be done. I know it's not a law, but it is, there is a civil penalty that goes with the mandate.
So we aren't so used to the government anymore, because this is getting, it's getting ridiculous, and you know, see, our kids, and there's no reason we need to depend on them, being in your job, and have a good support. There is no reason.
No, and I'm hesitant to say this, because I don't, I appear to be rational, because it don't. To, to raise the, to raise the value of the body, that is stated, would be probably something that the majority is going to not participate in too. By not being able to, seems to be, that, or, is not, and completely for having to follow the laws anyway. Um, and the board, the board would want to make a decision that it needs to, like, a whole other university to see how, but, I'm not trying to, it might be, you know. You know, saying now to the, the five or six million dollars, we get, I'm not going to say the board. The federal, it's. Federal, it's, it's, certainly, yeah, I was trying to reduce, you know, we're being more difficult, we're going to turn out the federal, you know, not, and that. There's, there's core special education, you know, all those services, considering, uh, part of the body, it's not, would not be any line. We're grossing, we're funding the special education as it is, but that's, you know. Now, you know, um, just like that, so, so, it's.
Cleaning supplies also are part of that. And there's some other things that we get to be determined that we're starting to discuss. But with SEL program.
Okay, so the SEL program, that's going to be the first one that's going to be in our students' schools. Of twenty twenty-two?
Twenty-two, twenty-three, this year is what we're looking at. Starting any kind of such program, but we haven't made any decisions yet as to what that program is.
It's not set minds up as that, because that's what we're just gonna have done, so.
It was previously, until there was some discussion about, um, we wanted to have some discussion about it with the school board, so we've since taken a step back. Um, we put a committee together, so we were actually to look at different programs, and set minds up as one of them. Some of the one you're reading here, maybe back here, was another one that we looked at strongly. And, um, we're still in those discussions to see which one wants to go up the board with the help of the parents.
So we don't use all of our hands that much. So we've only started, you said eighty-six thousand? Eighty-six thousand, two more, that would be two hundred fifty-two thousand, twenty-four.
That's probably the teachers and cleaning supplies, excuse me, not teachers, it's probably cleaning supplies and program.
See, I'm a head of the authority, so you know, they got a lot of pressure on us. If you force the license down, I'm sorry. I don't want to fall into the right thing to do. Everything is best we can do, due to us, the arm of government, it affects the schools. We're doing the best we can, um, and so I was making a little plan. We're really doing our time, we do discussions, and we do have, putting together the discussions sometimes. Um, we're really, really hard trying to figure this out, to work with us for, but.
Five, four, three, one, I saw the question as well. Are we allowed to now lie on the five forms that asks if your child has been vaccinated at times? Why does this need to come out?
It's not school if you read that form, because I, I just had to fill it out. And I wanted to know the same thing, so I looked at it. And according to the five forms, it does not, it's nothing with the school that is the OHSAA that is required for that.
Okay, so what's gonna happen, and what's, say, if you're not vaccinated and you're doing sports?
It doesn't say that you don't have to be vaccinated, all, they're just putting together a, if you read that thing real close. Because I don't think they do it. I'll, I'll be honest with you, my, my son is not going to be vaccinated, and he does not want to wear a mask, okay? I, I tell you straight up, but if you read that form, because I looked at it before I filled it out, because I have the same concern as you did, okay? But it comes from the OHSAA, and the OHSAA is doing anything compiling, uh, they just want to know figures and numbers in case there's an outbreak on how they, how they will have to take the next steps. I'll give you an example of what it is, is, uh, I'm taking my son to St. Louis this upcoming weekend for a soccer, uh, recruiting visit. They have to know, and it's by a percentage, and if, if he, if there's not a certain percentage of them that are vaccinated, then they have to wear masks at certain times when they're in a certain distance. That is my understanding of what I read in OHSAA, that is the same thing that they're gonna do, is how they are going to set their guidelines on the way sports is going to be done, kids sitting on the bench, things like that, um, how the, how it would be, uh, on the percentage of people that are vaccinated, if you read that real close.
So is that gonna have, uh, football games and everything, or is it more, like, we follow?
If, if, if the OHSAA said so, like, we got to follow what the OHSAA said so, otherwise we don't have football games.
Well, this is not true, it's, it is obvious, right? No, it is not, I, I did it, I just did it, and I finished.
According to what I looked at, you have to, exactly, otherwise it won't allow you, it won't allow you to complete the five forms.
Okay, I want to stop the session, yeah, I think it's up, but I just waited on four.
Maybe I missed that part, but I, I did look into it, because I had the same concern when I saw that.
You might wanna stop.
I, I, I've already completed it, so it's too late now, so. I wanted to get the form, but I didn't have the form about two weeks when they said you can't practice, so I just turned it over. No. No, we, career center, obviously, we did, we denied, we did this month, we did not do again, so.
Um, one thing that was good, which is, was that, like, the last thing they said, that, um, the budget bill had to be, um, it wasn't like, like, perhaps, and so we had to, to be able to find the compromise, and so, um, one of the compromises that came up, that the fair school funding plan was put back into the budget, um, and a plan offer funding for, that brings the state, oh, out of the compliance, or the draw from, that stinks the, stinks the high level funding levels on constitution, so that's the thing, puts a spin line, um. However, the fair school funding plan was designed to take six years to phase in, and the legislature was willing to give the plan a two-year try. So the next time the budget will require, um, the fair school funding plan to be addressed again, so that's just what I'm going to update. And we'll show that later, but we don't have any, like, any questions.
Yeah, but just, uh, even if the fair school funding that has assassins in the state of Ohio, the school system is, schools around the lines. We're not getting them, no, we're not, we're concerned that everyone's school veterans, yes, it's great, it makes us, it makes us.
The state has a whole, it pulls it in.
Or it does the evening for us, just.
Yeah, that's fair, but for the state, I think, it pulls it in.
Um, there's one I ask, that's unusual, the law part, um, the hospital, uh, Montana, that is, okay. There's something you didn't have in mind that they asked about. Any other videos, the, 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 health, it's on the health. Yes, that one, and it says, yes, and no. Anything that goes above, the, you have the, 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 they're going to judge them, yes, above the, they're trying to, not to know about parents of the protein that they're following, which are teaching, and that's, so.
And, well, I think that followed around, um, sex education, yes.
Yeah, just anything about, like, marketing, casino, I just thought it was a bit, um, there's a lot of stuff in the film.
Yeah, I do, same.
It's all done, it's good.
Is that something we can, we'll have to discuss, I think?
I don't think it's discussed, obviously, I don't think I mind, that's why I mentioned it, yes, self-care, um, it, it, it addresses a thing, um, in, you know, instruction, uh, if that's, uh, baby lectures in the non-career, this is additional to the current education requirement, and it's a bit after the current problems. Um, and then it also says, this is not by parents, parents have been returned to provide instruction, sex education, because it's both above the further educational code, or, um, such notes must include, I didn't include names of instructors, members, as well as critical meeting hours and crowd consent. I just wanted to make sure that we're following, and, 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 I think that's a lot of different things that are coming out. That's all, it's only the, the rest of the section that I was before.
I thought that was pretty straightforward. I use a different set of balls when I have these changes. Um, but, yeah, I mean, parents certified, which is what's on, yeah.
Yeah, because there's so much different stuff out there now, that, that's a lot of, yeah, so I should, I'll, you know.
So we've been in our organization, five, one, are we including consent items listed? Okay, the first item is a, it's a first reading order, the changes to the restraining, the second item is the ownership of the area education on media resourcing, which includes, um, subscription, which is, uh, it's a software, whatever, so that's what I'm saying.
Mrs. Manon?
Yes.
Mr., um, Mr. Bussing?
Yeah.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Mrs. Manon?
Yes.
I have two who are ready to move the paper, just basically, and the corporate reviews, but this time it's still here.
Sorry.
This is not a useful word, so.
Nice question, and this is just because I haven't thought about it after we've talked about that, the final form. And the final form, it says that parents are still allowed to pay by check, cash, or by the new paces, though, is that correct? Or is everything under the new paces?
No, the, 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 or, or, the, the, the.
I just want to make sure.
Any discussion?
I can, just, well, like, you're talking about, and I thought about this, in a perfect world, we would not have consumable things, we would not have paid what this is made, we would not have kindergarten tuition, and maybe someday we can impact it out, and right now, we're just doing our best to keep the fees as low as possible.
Yeah, that's true, we could talk a part about that, although that's a, I'm looking for you, just, but, after that.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Mrs. Manon?
Yes.
Mr. Bussing?
Yeah.
Mrs. Manon?
Yes.
Mr. Hardman?
I agree with your decision, we could, I'm understanding that, but, but, this is, uh, an email about this, this is a position that we created, where she works two different jobs, and it's become a bit of a nightmare, um, figuring out what's going to, when she's working over time, so it's sending one, one, for her. And she's not going to be a person in the union that has two different positions.
Questions? Mr. Hardman?
Yes.
Mr. Bussing?
Yeah.
Mrs. Manon?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Mrs. Manon?
Yes.
I have one more recommendation, you could be able to compare the, 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 some, to the other.
Sorry?
So you get the other change.
Questions? In a perfect world.
Again, are you going to use it, that you'd be able to, to compare the, the?
Mr. Hardman?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Mr. Bussing?
Yes.
Mrs. Manon?
Yes.
Mrs. Manon?
I have one other recommendation, you improve the, 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 education. I have again, you said that the gifted group.
Uh, we added another, uh, area of assessment in fourth grade, uh, we made the change, this past year, to go, um, with sixth grade and second grade testing. We decided that's too large for a gap, and we're doing sub-testing in fourth grade, cognitively. Uh, other changes are minor, just to try to better align our vertical progression of service lifting rates with grade.
Thank you.
Mr. Hardman?
Yes.
Mr. Bussing?
Yeah.
Mrs. Manon?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Mrs. Manon?
Yes.
I have six who are ready to move the personal access.
Um, I'll say.
Usually on first aid, the patient, somebody who's not, they did a little bit, they did a little, I got back, and they did, and that, and, we took it back, and we pulled it on to the law, just on the college, so we did have a map job, but it looks very, 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 for, uh, everything else is, uh, typical kind of stuff, and you can see back at three hundred, uh, that's sort of, there's some spending, that's sort of, that's all, that's stuff, and we're also finding our supplement contracts in this one.
Any other questions? Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Mrs. Manon, I guess.
Mr. Bussing?
Yeah.
Mrs. Manon?
Yes.
Mr. Hardman?
Did I include the number?
Thank you. Uh, are recommended for work, we can send that.
I'll wish you the best.
The first item is the special award, in June, uh, James twenty-first, twenty-one, and regular, uh, raises, um, June twenty-first, twenty-two. And then we have the diagnostic, um, we're gonna say something, there are diagnostic, so the monitoring, uh, that should be seen, that there is a narrative in the foundation course, uh, and that's because a lot of information is going to be included, or, in the educational focus, so, you're getting, for example, a work presentation, a picture of course, of the educational focus. So we're gonna go to that, and that's what I'm gonna present, this way, here, twenty-four. Let's get people, look at the ground floor. The wall is in here, it is received fifty-one point seven million dollars, seventy-five point three percent of that amount was in tax revenue. And you can see, we receive with the state, restricted, unrestricted, maybe, will climb at two percent of that amount. Property value allocation, what that is, is that the state can go back at home, standard money, that are, rewards, or the taxes, don't make that, but the state pays that, and we have the tax figures, uh, low, it's a good point, nine percent, and then finances sources, are a point five percent, and then any such things that, um, we have the prior, or, ventures, and we receive nine, or, stock, and, and. We look at our spending, five options, we spent fifteen point two million dollars, and this is a breakdown by function, how that money was spent. Regular construction was the largest portion, at forty-three percent, uh, followed by, um, special education, which is at fifteen point four, and operations, which is at eleven percent. And you can see how much you care for, right now, is a percent of that total amount, fifteen point two million dollars. We look at expenditures by object, and also, and mainly include, you know, so. For salary, specifically, we're twenty-one, we've got, have spent twenty-seven point six million dollars, and that represents fifty-two point nine percent of our total expenditures. And you can see from the graph, that certified hours, which is the teachers, and administrators, guidance classes, speech awareness, geologists, that represents seventy-five, eight percent of the power, and classified hours, which is at eighteen point nine percent. Now, we have, last by choice, we have, uh, historians, the administrative assistants, student supervisors, that are, that are, that are, that are, that's a general. Next item is the benefits, um, spent ten, ten point five million dollars on benefits, which represents twenty point one percent of our total expenditures. The largest portion here is insurances, um, we have a benefit, which is in, in, insurance, as well as, insurance, that represents a different pie. Retirement contributions, which is at forty point one percent, that is, the district pays on the half, every employee in the district, they, percentage of their salary into the appropriate retirement system, that are either, either state teacher retirement, or teachers, or support ways retirement, or the, uh, classified ones. We talk about services, we've got ten point one million dollars on services, representing nineteen point three percent of the expenditures. The largest portion here are, are, thirty-four point nine percent, is done by transportation, equal to transportation. Uh, next gather, we've got the education, at twenty point six percent, and operations, which is at sixteen point four percent. When we look at supplies, we've got one point seven million dollars on supplies, that's three point three percent of the expenditures. We spent the largest portion of this pie on footwear, at twenty-five point eight percent. Classroom supplies at fifteen point five percent, uh, the operations was at twelve point four percent, and our consumables, at fourteen percent. Lots of expenses are reduced, because of the S O money, every season, or the, uh, public relief, um, money every season, because of the, because of that money from our general fund, to develop, much, every season. Next item is account, and that, the values, is, represents one point two million dollars, or two point two percent, this includes all the equipment, and the district purchases. Uh, you can see, we spent the largest portion of the body, and technology, at ninety point one, at one percent, and then the classroom equipment, was twelve percent, and operations, was nineteen point two percent. Next item, we're gonna be on athletics, we spent eight hundred twenty thousand dollars, that's one point six percent. Largest portion is seventeen point eight percent, and we spent on property tax, to large entities. We gave it one point five percent to some, at the fiscal office, for the living taxes, on the, that, that means based with some, and then you can see the other percentages, the next largest category, the membership dues, and that is only at ten point eight percent. When we look at transfers, we, uh, transfers in the amount of three hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars, super percent, um, six percent. What you can see here is the, um, transfers that we made, each year, we made a ten thousand dollar, um, transfer from the general fund to the, to the, uh, fund. We paid a five thousand dollar donation from the, for the mental, for the mental program, athletics. Uh, you see, also, nine, two sixty-four, which is nineteen point one percent of that pie, on the energy conservation bonds, um, the district issued debt, and the payment of that debt is paid for, um, the savings every season, of energy conservation, that was done in two thousand and thirteen. So, we paid the first one, and we transferred that money out of the general fund, and paid a debt on this bond. And the food services, is a second, you're reading that, to, um, transfer money, food service program. And while the kids are in school, they're not getting money, the food service program, and they are solving, salary benefits for the employees, so everyone's, they should call a lot of times, and, and. Next item, I, this is, is, um, expenditures by school, and what this includes is all costs, which are changing, it's not simply the budgets that are managed by individual personnel, it's all the costs, which include the repairs, the salaries, the benefits, for all people, those who have some terminations, or, or, just to kind of, if you know, data, how many, and that, for both of them. Just, the school, or, or, office, or, or, I'm sorry, some more, a little, a little, more, for success, no, it could be separate, uh, it's, yeah, it's not really, I'm, I'm. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a serious, yeah, no, we just want, it's strictly for this, the, 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 actually going down. Um, next item, this is, here, twenty-four, and it's probably debt, or, general operating fund, it's a good time, and, and, so. Um, each month, we take a look at our forecast, compared to our actual cost, so this is to show, we're actually getting a lot of, at the end of June, compared to our forecast, that was approved by the board, and. So if you look at the revenue, you'll see that our revenue is down about one hundred sixty-four thousand dollars, where we were, as, as, and then if you look at the next slide, you see the expenditures side of, and again, you'll see that expenditures were down, uh, nine hundred sixty-one thousand dollars, a lot of, a lot of shifting, and, and, money, to, to, when it's, when it's, when it's. When you look at the last one, at the bottom line, what you're seeing is our, cash balance, that's, that's, or, three hundred sixty-seven thousand, we're counting two thousand, so, that, and, and, which is a big, then, we have a more, if you come, or, or, that are not paid by the end, by the end of June, so that represents about, uh, twenty-nine thousand dollars. And at the end of the day, this is my last presentation, just a word of education, that's, that's, full, and I say, there are, that is signed by my, a bigger, by yours, it's been more by yours. And I want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve the district, I appreciate it, uh, and this isn't the board that hiring, but you still give your, our, our, our stuff, that's, 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 that's. Any questions? Mrs. Manon?
Yes.
Mr. Bussing?
Yeah.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Mrs. Manon?
Yes.
Mr. Hardman?
Uh, next item is, 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 of the services.
Sorry.
What this is, is the district typically handles the, the, response, for, for, St. Bart's, and St. Bart's, this year, St. Bart's has the option, of taking, um, responsibly, they, they, their, funds, they have to, they have to, in that decision, because we gotta get this, uh, more agenda, um, before schools started, and they have a decision here, it's either with the, um, contingent plan, that we will maintain, the, of their, of their funds. In fact, if we don't, if we kind of, back to the school, and we don't take it, we won't do, initiate a, a, for the purchase, or, for this, until we, we're, 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 we're. Any questions? Uh, Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Mr. Bussing?
Yeah.
Mrs. Manon?
Yes.
Mrs. Manon?
Yes.
Mr. Hardman?
My next item is a relation, arising from the, um, approved, uh, vacation. And this has a lot of, the transition, has a lot of, COVID-19, kind of, transition, this is requesting payment for, or, approved, uh, vacation, for myself. Typically, I have a vacation time that I take, and, uh, the issue, I had the virus in August, and I went to Hawaii in the summer. We had a long time, we couldn't, and we ended up getting canceled twice. In addition, May to probably, August is the busiest time of your, your, of, um, I took some days off in June, um, July has been a lot of, between getting our looks closed, getting our looks removed, getting a little setup ready to go, and then start the school year, and I wanted a transition, um, it's been, I'm really, top. In fact, I took it, it's, most evenings, to get a jumpstart, and some, work, to get done. So I'm asking, that you, that you, you're allowed to be paid for the, for the, vacation, that I have. And if I can take vacation time, at the end of the month? Typically, when I, if, if this was a long year, and I had days to years, I could have moved, moved in July, because that, that I did, I could have done in August. Since I done it in July, I had to sort of accelerate everything, and do it, in June, and July, so, yeah. Yeah, I figured, that we're starting to get on, 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 stuff together, and we also have the partners, so, that's, we have a, we have a, we have a, we have a. Mrs. Manon?
Yes.
Miss? Mr. Bussing?
Yeah.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Her?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Hardman?
My next item is, is, um. All right, we hear, uh, we're going to, we've got a, 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 and a change box, for the next year, so that, and, um, they are. Now, we'd like to add, lots of ones, don't, the, 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 or, the, change box, it's up to them, they're authorized, up to this amount, if they, if they turn, if they get it. Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Mr. Bussing?
Yeah.
Mrs. Manon?
Yes.
Mrs. Manon?
Yes.
Mr. Hardman?
Yes.
And the last item, yeah, the direction of transition. This is something, you know, the, the, Department of Education, can join with the, with this together, um, it is a document that's supposed to, um, assume a, a transition between, without, in, in, with its income, um, I, I, I filled it out, to the best of my ability, and then I, and it's not, too. And I, and I. And I, and I took a piece of our, obviously, our, I can add to, so that the meta grant replacement, you know, have their findings, um, or what, what things there are. So um, it's a little bit more than I mentioned, what the state required, but I think it's a good tool, because it gives you chance to think about things that were in the ready. So that you can go out and download them, at least analyze this. It may be loud, and I was starting to think that, and I don't look very much on the wall, or I don't look on the bookshelf. So every single question that's asked, it's a, we're the environmental applications. There are the bookshelf, or the plan, so. Um, so I'm a little bit of a, that is not working, that, you know, we've got our legal. Where are the legal services, we're very dedicated, so that's all in there. And now we need to get to the man that's flying, the uh, who's the whole, the whole, the list. And he's got to check it off, if he goes through the others. So, we'll do with this.
Can you pull back one more time, please, now? When we should talk about closing any drafts, and, and they want to sweep it and prepare it for the next. And they're all a lot prepared in our district, and now some people will fistfight. And we should, there's no threat. And then there's no hope, and there's red. This is how her experience, and this is amazing, and she took her time to take anything off. Because she has to put it on the street, or something.
If I look. I would make sure, I've been there nine years, it's important for the, for the transition, make sure the district's in agreement. I know we can, with the, with the audio, and now I have a talking. Mr. Bussing.
Yes.
Mrs. Mound.
Yes.
Mrs. Strong.
Yes.
Mrs. McInnes. Mrs. Strong.
Yes.
And that can produce by the back of the seat, it's for, that can be.
This, first of all, I just want to say that there, we've been helping with this for seven years now. Uh, this is like, um, seeing a good one, right, uh, for the district. We always available information from all sectors and units. Um, you know, fantastic, and thank you for your lessons.
Thank you.
I just. I know you so much for being so, so, so. Uh, it's one of those, for the diversity, I see the people take, but I'm prepared. You've got one.
Oh, yours is.
Well, why didn't you have? Thank you so much for all of your hard work and dedication.
Gary, I really miss you, and I just want the district to know, everything she does is why she got those common rewards. Very few district uh, treasurers get that hard to get with five years, which is.
Six.
Six years, and that's because of the work she puts in. That Gary.
Well, how about, she really gives. You have a channel for her. I'm not sure, I'm very tired, and I'm very, I'm very busy. I'm a songwriter, too. But I'm not going to take that. I'm a little worried, and it, it's just the invite that I've heard, it's just become a little bit old, and I'm a bit a little older. It's time to, they can do some relaxing, and remember. Definitely. Thank you.
Our, our, finally, we are going to, we're going to executive session, this is what we're purpose, uh, providing for the whole purpose. When we get out of executive session, we do not need to make any additional. Again, I, there are a lot of, uh, to look at, so, I can't, I don't understand, um, I was, um, I'm going to do a little bit of that, the session, and I'm sure. All right, do you have a motion?
I have a motion.
You can stay if you want. You're welcome. Mrs. Mrs. Mound.
Yes.
Mr. Bussing. Mrs. Strong.
Yes.
Mrs. McInnes.
Yes.
Mrs. Strong.